Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming this afternoon. I am Barry Mills, interim chancellor, if I haven't met you yet. And we are delighted to welcome you to this town hall to continue a conversation about the state of the university. We last did this in the spring, and we were hopeful to do it over the summer, but then we recognized that, given people's schedules, that that wasn't really the optimal time to do it. And moreover, for those of you who were here a few weeks ago and heard my convocation talk, it has been remarkably difficult, much more difficult than I would have ever imagined, to understand what we're here principally to talk about today, the financial condition of the university. And as I spoke about this a number of weeks ago, that was and has been, and is a little bit less, but has been incredibly frustrating for me and for many of the folks that I work with, and I know for lots of the deans and people who have responsibilities for budgets at this institution. It is actually quite remarkable to me to have learned about the way the university's systems and projections and budgets were kept over the years, and trying to understand how to make decisions in light of those budgets and frankly incomplete and confusing information slowed us up in trying to decide how to go forward and talk to folks about where we're headed. And it didn't make any sense to me and to many of the other folks that I work with to try to make those decisions with incomplete information. If the definition of leadership is making decisions with imperfect information, I wasn't prepared to make the kinds of decisions on the imperfect information that we had. And the numbers continue to move around and have moved around a lot over this period. But as I stand here today, I might have said the same thing two months ago, though, as I stand here today, I'm pretty confident that we're beginning to hone down and really do now understand the financial condition of the university. So over the last weeks and months since I took over the role of interim chancellor, we have been having conversations with large numbers of people in this community, many of whom are in the room today, to try to understand how we bring financial stability to the place. And although these conversations have been widespread, as I said in my convocation talk, they probably haven't been as transparent nor as communicative to many of you as you deserve and as we hope and aspire to. Today is another continuation of that exercise. The big picture here is that, given all the work that we've done and the conversations that we've had with deans and all kinds of folks around the campus on the administrative side, that we now actually do see a path forward to bringing financial stability to the university. That is the good news. The other really great news is, is in this room on Saturday, there are going to be nearly 3,000 people coming to visit this university to try to decide whether the sons and daughters of all those students want to come to this place. 3,000 people. That's a good news story, a really good news story. And we have to sort of keep that at the forefront of what we're thinking about as we talk about all of the considerations that we need to talk about today. So the good news is, or at least the more positive news is, is there is a path. The hard part of that is, is that path is not without sacrifice and hard choices that we've already had to make and hard choices that we will have to make and implement over the next weeks and months. And I don't minimize the impact of any of those choices. I take them actually quite personally, and I'm troubled by many of the things that we are inevitably led to have to be done because at the end of the day, one only has the resources that one has available to it, and we must balance our checkbook. The big picture is, of course, that this university has grown dramatically over the last 10 years. And we have grown beyond the extent of our resource. And certainly some people point quite accurately to the fact that a lot of the construction and infrastructure that has burdened this campus makes that challenge even more difficult. But the simple facts are, and many of you privately will say this to me, we have grown much faster than resources available to the university on the hope, and I say "hope," that the resources would be available in order to balance our budgets. And so there was a hope that enrollment would grow at way high dramatic numbers, well beyond, in fact, what the enrollment people actually thought was achievable. There was hope that graduate programs would grow at certain rates, and grants would come in at incredibly optimistic projections. So we're faced with a reality, and that reality is trying to understand how we bring stability to this fantastic institution. And that's what this place is. It's an incredibly important, fantastic institution that needs actually to have a little bit of a change in its own perception of itself. And I've talked about this some. It's important, as we listen to all of this, and some of the message is hard, to remember how great this university is. Too many of us, too many of us actually talk about the place, "It's a great university, but..." It's not a great university, but it is a great university, serving an essential mission for the city of Boston and in the place of the educational community. And if we aren't proud of what we have achieved and ambitious for the future, it is not possible for us really to expect that others will be as ambitious and positive as we are. And so I think about all that we're talking about today in that vein. Let me make one final point. In making all of these decisions and trying to understand where we're headed, at the heart of what we've thought about is the strength and vitality of our academic program for our undergraduates, the strength and vitality of our program for our graduate students, and remembering that the fundamental mission of a university is about education. It's about educating students and creating an opportunity for them into the future. And so that focus is where we have been headed. There has been a lot of noise that is absolutely false, that what we've done in the past and what we're going to do in the future diminishes the academic opportunity that our students. And I'm here to tell you, it's just not true. Makes good press, just not true. So we're going to take you through today what we've been thinking, where we think we're headed, where we think we're going to be headed over the next few years. Kathleen will describe to you in detail our financial condition and the projects that we're thinking about on the capital side. And then, as we did a while ago at the last talk, we'll be happy to hear from you and to answer any questions that you've got on your mind. So Kathleen, take it away.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathleen Kirlyse. I'm the vice chancellor of administration and finance, and I'm going to walk you through some information about the university's financial situation. So we'll talk about the fiscal '17 results of the university to give you an update of where that, how that's evolved since we last met in May, talk some about the fiscal '18 operating budget, which is the current year we're in. Fiscal '18 runs from July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018. Take a little time to talk about some updates of the university's done to its capital program, talk some about parking. Our interim provost, Emily McDermott, will talk some about the academic program, and as Barry said, we'll open the Florida questions and comments. So fiscal '17 operating results. So when we came in May, we were talking about projecting a $7 million deficit for the university. And folks had worked across the board on some really hard choices last year to get us to that point. So I'm happy to stand here today and say that we actually beat that forecast. We are ending fiscal '17, which is in the process of being audited by the university's auditors, but these are the numbers that the auditors have with them now and are examining them, that we're at a $3 million deficit. So a lot of that is attributable to the work of lots of people in this room who've really worked really hard to make sacrifices to help the university balance its budget. So you can look and see that, almost without exception, we were able to have further reductions in the costs than what we had thought last May. The one thing I would say about this, though, is unfortunately, as we all know, many of these things were one-time cuts. We were looking to really reduce a significant deficit, and they're not sustainable over the long term. So some of the work that we need to do for the current fiscal year is really make some organizational changes to change the structure so that we don't have to be making these kinds of cuts every single year. So to put a little bit of the result in context, one of the measures that the university's measured by is its operating margin. The university's system as a whole looks to have universities campuses be at about 2% operating margin. You'll see back in fiscal '14, we were almost right there, we were at 1.9%. Over the past few years, we've had varying operating margins. We thought we'd be in minus 1.6 back in May, and we're going to end the year at 0.7. So, you know, we've been able to move forward and have the university, you know, end the year with a $3 million deficit. And to recap, just some of the really difficult things that we did over the past year, you know, every single department in this university cut their budget. We add that up, that was $11.2 million worth of savings. There was a hiring freeze that was put in place, and hiring slowed down. That saved the university $3.5 million. We had equipment that originally we were thinking we had them in the operating results, expensing them. They're actually larger purchases, and you capitalize them. That means you take the cost and you spread it out over several years in the form of depreciation. That saved on the operating side 2.3 million. We did have lower enrollment for some situations last year that did, our financial aid is tied to, how much we have for financial aid for our students is tied to enrollment, how many students we have, so we did save some money on the financial aid side. We had to defer IT investments last year. We had cut back on the shuttle and did some additional utility savings. I would say for today that with the shuttle, we have restored shuttle service this fall so that it is back up to where it was previously. So these cuts, these cuts here did not get maintained for the fall, so we did bring that back up to better match with our enrollment and the needs that our students have to get from both the MBTA as well as the temporary parking lots that we're using for parking this academic year. We had a decrease in graduate student waivers also, which was tied to enrollment. We worked to take the temporary parking lots that we've had to rent because of the UCRR project, and we capitalized those. So those are going to be added to the cost of the UCRR project, and we'll depreciate those over time, but it allows us to spread the cost out over several years. And our non-unit professionals took a voluntary furlough last year that saved the university on a one-time basis money as well. So, you know, I would like just to take the opportunity to really just recognize this work that was done, really, you know, for everybody who made sacrifice here, you know, acknowledge that. So now with fiscal year ended on June 30th, we've moved on into fiscal '18. To start out, as Barry mentioned, we started out with some causes for celebration here. We started this fall with the largest freshman class in the history of the university. We've got 881 students and the largest new undergraduate class, 3425. That's the reason to celebrate, that really is helping us out, if students want to come here and begin their education. A lot of our major construction projects, things that we reported in the past of being delayed or having increased costs, these projects are making substantial progress. They're on target to be completed during this academic year or shortly thereafter, and are on time and on budget. So those are, you know, the UCRR project, all the roadways being relocated. Some of those roadways are back open now, so, you know, some of the closures that we had over the summer, the roads are back in service. The residence hall is going up as we speak, that's scheduled to be open next fall for the fall semester. We're actively marketing and really working to let students be aware of the new residential community, and also the new parking garage is going up. I'd encourage you all to take a look at it, the panels are starting to go up, it's going to really look like a parking garage as the construction continues. Our faculty, some of the core of our institution, we continue to be recognized for achievements in teaching and research, as well as service to our community. And UMass Boston rose, and US News &amp; World report to be a top-tier national university category for the third year in a row. We've won the Princeton Review Best in the Northeast honors. So reasons to celebrate and to bring joy to the university. Now, back when we were in May, we were talking about a $30 million deficit for this year because we had one-time cost reductions, and we were just looking at really looming deficit. So this is a slide from May, this was from the presentation back then. You know, we were just under $30 million bucks. As a result of the work that was done last year, some of those savings did turn out to not be one-time savings, they did in fact turn out to be able to be carried over into this year. So that $30 million, $29 million morphed into an $18 million deficit. So that's really big news. How did that happen? We were able to get increased state appropriation, the state increased its support for some of the fringe benefits that our employees were paid. We had increased tuition and fees revenue above and beyond what we had originally anticipated. Because of the hiring slowdown, we did have less payroll last year than we originally thought we might recognize. And then, as we worked with departments, with all the deans and vice chancellors and folks across the university, we realized that some of those cuts last year were in fact able to be sustained for this year. Not without sacrifice, not without hardship, but that they could actually be more than just a one-time cut. $4.5 million. And then we've worked hard with the building authority to get some of the records related to depreciation and interest squared away, and that resulted in a little bit more savings as well. So we took that $30 million, and now it's $18.5 million. To start with the $18.5 million, just the UMass system gave us a target this year of $5 million. They said, "We realize, UMass Boston, you've got a big deficit. We eventually want you to get to have your books balanced, we want you to have that 2% operating margin, but for this year, we're going to give you a $5 million target." So over the last few months, there's been conversations with leadership throughout the campus, both on the academic and the administrative side. What has been looked at and talked about and trying to understand is a guide rather than a mandate, is what it would look like in different areas of the university if we had a 10% reduction in personnel based off of fiscal '17 committed funds, and what it would look like for a 10% reduction in non-personnel based off of fiscal '16 results. And how we came to that was, we realized those non-personnel cuts last year were just really severe, really significant, and we really couldn't have people cut off of that. So we went back to fiscal '16, had planning done from there. With the staffing, we realized we have more staff than we have money to pay for. So we did start with actual costs tied to last year for that. So we've had discussions with Tom, Tom's met in the academic affairs office, we've had discussions with the vice chancellors, meet with departments. The planning is focused on maintaining the integrity of the university's academic program. So really, all efforts were made to achieve that goal and to really look at some of the other things that we do, that we spend money on, that aren't quite as closely tied to that. And the proposed plans were then reviewed for alignment with available resources and campus priorities. I also would point out this year, as we move forward, it's just not an exercise in how we might cut costs. We do have some costs here that we're bringing on for strategic reasons and to get the budget to match more closely with what our operations are actually doing. We have residence halls opening for fall 2018. Student affairs and some other areas of the university really need to get ready for that, and some of the costs to get ready have begun this year. There'll be additional costs for fiscal '19, but for this year, that's $1.8 million. There's work underway now, staff are being hired, and investments are being made to ready ourselves for residential life here on campus. Collective bargaining is something that's set by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The Commonwealth has come up with parameters for collective bargaining for this fiscal year. At the time we talked last May, there hadn't been parameters out, so we didn't have any in the forecast. Here, these are parameters used to bargain with our bargaining units, and then ultimately, because this is the first year of the contract, the legislature would appropriate money to pay for those costs associated with our employees who are covered under collective bargaining agreements. Not all of our employees are covered under collective bargaining, so there is cost the university has to pick up for the rest of its employees. So if the bargaining gets completed and the legislature appropriates the money, we would be looking at an additional $540,000 in this fiscal year. If the legislature does not appropriate that money, I'm not expecting that we move forward with this cost. So it really is dependent on successful negotiations and then appropriation of the money. We've also increased financial aid to students this year, working with the financial aid office, continue to invest in our students and their ability to come here and obtain an education without having huge loads of debt. So we have almost a half million dollars additional in financial aid this year. And then we had to adjust the utilities to really make sure that all the costs associated with the ISC and university hall are fully accounted for. We've already begun some of the work to close this gap. So there's some things that went on over the summer that I'd like to update folks on. First, if you've called the last town hall, Emily spoke about the NTT changes that it had made last year. There's been no additional changes from what was discussed last year, but the savings for this year is at $1.1 million. So by having the sections that were reduced, that were planned to be reduced, we're going to save that amount of money. We also offered a voluntary retirement incentive program over the summer and had employees take that. We're saving $827,000 worth of salary costs this fiscal year and $880,000 of fringe benefits costs. These costs will be even bigger as we look at fiscal '19. This is just the cost savings for the current fiscal year, which would include the time that, there's still costs we have for the employees for the time they were on the payroll and for their incentive payments and for all the vacation and sick time that they might have earned during their careers here. And then we do have the early learning center that we are, which is scheduled to be closed in January 2018. For this year's savings would be $259,000. I am happy to say, we are having discussions with community partners to really continue to figure out, you know, how we might address childcare long-term, so exploring whether or not there'd be organizations who'd be interested in operating a childcare center in the same area so that our students and faculty and staff would have some childcare options. And those discussions are going really well, and we hope to have some more final news soon about being able to offer a solution to have daycare in this area without the university having to run a daycare center. So we've done, so far, that's about $3 million that we've got covered, so we had the $18 million gap. We've got $3 million done, and now we've got about $15 million to go. So what's going on with that? As I spoke, there's some of the things that are affecting the gap or some of the increases we have here, the cost of living and the financial aid. All the academic areas of the university and all the vice chancellors made recommendations around a 10% reduction for their non-personnel costs, so all the operating costs of the department that don't involve staff. And with that, when we add them all up and have met with people, we're looking at $3.6 million on the vice chancellor's side and $2.4 million in academic affairs. So these plans are going to be adopted, we'll be loading budgets into the system by the end of next week so that people will have their budgets and can proceed with what needs to, with all the activities that are planned for non-personnel for fiscal '18. There's also been reductions to temporary employees for $1 million. We've cut back on the amount of temporary employees we have in the university across all, many areas of the university. We're going to be embarking on a printer consolidation project. UMass Dartmouth went through a similar project where they were able to save some pretty substantial money, so we'll be getting that underway, and you'll hear some more about that. And then there's just different, depending on the department, some different miscellaneous savings that would be about $6.5 million, $6.6 million worth of savings that are recognized. So, okay, we've got that, we're going to work on getting that set up and being able to be implemented, and now we're back, now we're down to a gap of $8.8 million. Okay, so remember, the system office is having us look for five. So as part of these planning conversations that we've been having, we also were having discussions with the deans and vice chancellors about how staffing in areas might look if we didn't have the same amount of money for personnel. So when we were having those conversations, a couple of things that were put into the mix were no reductions to tenured faculty, no reductions to the tenure track faculty, and no reductions to NTTs. So really protecting the academic program of the university. So after all those discussions were held, we're working on getting some tentative, we have some tentative plans that will be being reviewed, that we're looking about $1.8 million. It'll put us about $7 million gap. So what are the steps with that? First of all, we're talking about 40 to 70 positions. These are not positions that are vacant, these are positions that are occupied positions. Like I said, the plans are being reviewed, they're with human resources and are being reviewed. Then there'll be discussion with the bargaining units about all the appropriate steps that we need to do when we have staffing reductions. Some of that discussion is beginning, and will be carried through throughout the, through all the necessary steps. And then we'll be doing notifications around specifics in November. After we do that, we still have a gap, so there's areas that we're still looking at that we'll be talking, doing more planning, and we'll be back and talking. Expect the next town hall to be in December, so we'll have some more updates then. But we're looking at centers and institutes, so there's planning there, working in academic affairs to really look at how centers and institutes can be more self-sustaining and have less university support. Or we've had some beginning discussions with our bargaining units about a negotiated furlough. Clearly, that would have to be negotiated, but that's something that we could potentially pursue in light of having reduced amount of layoffs. Program reviews, talking about program reviews, we've done some discussion even with the faculty budget long-range planning committee about taking a look at some of our programs. Temporary employees. HR is going to be sending out through our vice chancellor of human resources some information. We're going to be looking for some more information around temporary employees, and really going to a zero-based budgeting for that for this year. So basically, you'll get a list of departments who have temporary employees will get a list of their temps and have to justify what, the reasons for maintaining the temps. So we'll see, you know, where that could really reduce, that's the minimal amount, and we'll see what savings that can generate. We're also going to be looking to reorganize the administration and finance functions of the university as well as marketing, to really provide better service for all the departments, but to take a look at how we might be able to streamline that and make it more efficient. What does this mean for the future? As Barry said, the pathway is there for the university's, for a solid financial future for the university. You know, we're just going through some really hard times right now to right-size our current operations and become better. When we do this, then we can make decisions on how we need to move forward. We can focus on how to grow net revenue, including increased enrollment, online education, how the Bayside property might be developed. You know, all the numbers I'm talking about this afternoon don't include any assumptions about growing revenue, other than the basic tuition increases that the system office has and those kinds of items. So there's really some opportunities for the university to grow revenue, to help begin to invest back into what we need to do. And then this will put us in a better position to solve the remaining funding needs that we might need for the substructure project. I'll talk about the substructure project a little bit with the capital part of the presentation, but the work we're doing right now will get us back to a positive operating margin and be able to put us on strong financial footing going forward. So that's sort of the operating budget and where we are with fiscal '18. As I said, we'll be having more town halls, we'll have more discussions with people, more conversations. Your ideas are welcome on how we can help, you know, get some of this stuff squared away, so, you know, please, please, you know, talk with your units, let us know some of the things, ideas you might have. Capital projects update. Since we last met, we've made some changes to the capital plan of the university as well. There's a new project that we have that was approved by the Board of Trustees over the summer for the substructure, for the substructure demolition and quadruple development project. It's been approved by the Board of Trustees for $155.5 million. The Commonwealth has committed in its fiscal '18 capital plan to appropriate $78 million of funding over the next three years for this project. So that's beginning with $6 million in fiscal '18 that we've already received. We're working with the building authority regarding this project, so they've hired a project manager. They're out for bid for a designer so that we really can get the schedule on this tied down a little bit more and begin moving forward. And as part of this project, we also are actively working on relocation work for the science center and the athletics areas of the university that would be being demolished as part of this project. But that is now an approved project, so there's funding tied to it, and it is part, formal part of the university's capital plan. Unfortunately, we've also had to remove some projects from the plan because we just don't have enough debt capacity to fund everything that's in the plan based on our current active projects that exist. Some of the ones are the Tri-Generation Energy Plant, that was $27.5 million originally planned. We had planned for a public safety and athletics building that's now being eliminated, right, $22.7 million. We went through the whole capital plan and just cleaned up a whole lot of projects that were sort of in the works, that went to be $11.7 million, and is part of the substructure project. Originally, we had planned to build a new pool and planned to build a new greenhouse, and we just aren't going to be able to do those right now, so that's a reduction of $14.5 million. Part of the reason why this is necessary is because we have a project funding update regarding the parking garage. Originally, when this was started, it was designed to be a P3 project that would be similar to how our residence halls are being built, where basically we use a third party to build the project, and we don't have that as part of our debt capacity as the university. Now, that was unable to proceed as a P3 project, there just isn't a business model that supports it, so it's now a debt finance project in the amount of $71 million. And it's scheduled and on track to be completed and on track to be completed at the end of this academic year. We're going to have an additional 4.1 million dollars in debt services as a result of this project. So with the construction of the parking garage and the fact that parking rates haven't increased in several years, it's made it necessary for the university to now look at parking rates. We've hired a consultant named Walker Parking Consultants to help us develop an overall transportation strategy, including recommendations on parking fees to support the university's parking and shuttle services. We expect recommendations to be out later this month and then there'll be conversations with the unions and with appropriate parties as we're required to do. So that pretty much sums up the major changes on the university's capital program. And now I will turn the floor over to Emily McDermott to provide some information on the academic programs of the university.
Thanks Kathleen. I'm Emily McDermott. I'm the interim vice chancellor for academic affairs and provost. I, as the chief academic officer on campus, I'm very happy to wear my button and to say that there's nobody out there that more fervently believes than I that we should not cut at the academic heart of this university. In that context, I just wanted to say that despite some of the narratives that I hear, the rumors, the stories that are repeated as fact, we have made every round of reductions that we've undertaken in the university with an absolute instruction to all parties to minimize the negative effects of any cuts on the academic programs of the university. That's one of the reasons we've, in, in the staffing reductions, we've held tenure stream faculty harmless to those. And we've gotten to the point where although we did an early round of reductions of NTT faculty last year, we now are at a stable point where we don't expect to make any further reductions of any magnitude at this point. The, the narrative that I hear most frequently recently is that we've been canceling enormous numbers of sections and making it impossible for students to, to progress in their degrees, to be able to move forward in their degrees. I cannot say forcefully enough. This is a false narrative. This is not true. We have given instructions to chairs and deans. Every reduction that we have made has been made in consultation with the department chairs and the deans. The department chairs and deans have been given instructions that say, make sure you don't have a negative impact on students' ability to progress in degree as you make reductions. So by definition, I think that has been our goal. And it has been also our effect because I can tell you, and I spent a lot of time this summer dealing with, dealing with canceled sections and replaced sections and all sorts of issues like that. And I can tell you absolutely that although we have as a routine matter canceled under-enrolled sections over the course of August, well, from June to August, that's, that's something that all universities do around the country. Every university in the world is looking at under-enrolled classes through June, July, and August and deciding whether they can afford to present those classes in September if they have not filled to any reasonable capacity. So this is not a deficit-related activity that we've been going through. This is a normal efficiency-related activity. And in all cases where we canceled courses, we made sure that they were not essential for students to progress in degree. The chairs put forward possible cancellations. The deans approved possible cancellations. In all cases, they were testifying that these would not cause significant delays for students to be able to either complete their gen ed programs at the beginning of their careers here or complete their majors in time to graduate at the end of their career. I know that this is the case because although we canceled a certain number of courses, almost all the courses we canceled were courses that had multiple sections and there were still open seats in other sections of the same courses at the beginning of the semester for students to move into if their class was canceled. There was a small number of classes that we canceled that did not have other sections available, but in those cases, again, the department chairs and the deans judged that these were not essential for, for students to complete their degrees or progress in their degrees. And another fact that I want to put forward is there are at least 40, possibly 50, classes that we did run that were under-enrolled precisely because the chairs and the deans put forward to us that these were essential for people to complete their degrees or progress in degree. And so whenever those cases were made, we ran the course under-enrolled rather than cancel it. When those cases were not made, we canceled. So I think the narrative that says we're heartlessly and carelessly preventing students from moving towards completion of their degrees is just not true. Okay. All right. So I don't have anything else I want to say, but I'll, I'll open it up for everybody to questions at this point.
So back to your slide, right after the 40 to 70 staff cuts, if you want to, if you can get that.
Sure.
The next one.
This one?
Yes, that one.
That one, okay.
I believe so. Okay. Yeah, perfect. So you said you're not cutting faculty. Emily just said that she doesn't want to cut the heart of UMass Boston. As a staff member, as an alumni, I believe by not cutting everybody from top all the way down, including faculty, and also temporary employees should be going first per contract rules, you're now affecting your students more than you are by not looking at it across the board from top to bottom. Why are you not including everybody in your cuts?
Because I think we have been advised by many folks that we've spoken to across the campus that they don't share your view. And so, um,
I mean, not to interrupt, speaking as one of the reps for one of the unions, I care to disagree.
Okay. Well, we can disagree. And, and so as we think about the importance of, and the fundamental importance of what's happening in our classrooms and in the programs that we have, it may be that at some point we do have to look at programs to understand the strength of those programs. We did meet yesterday with a faculty committee that actually brought this up with us, particularly around PhD and master's degree programs. But we're not there yet because honestly, those kinds of conversations in an academic institution are much harder to have and much more complicated to have in, for a whole variety of reasons. So I think at this point, it's fair to say, it's not where we started. But I think it's also fair to say that if you speak to many people on campus, a number of people will say to me, we have too many PhD programs, too many master's degree programs, and that they haven't achieved in some cases, the aspirations that we've had for them.
Maybe if you pay them for their fourth year, they would. Maybe they would graduate if you paid them a little bit more. Maybe if you could buy some sense of ambition and they didn't have to drop out. They didn't have to pay for their medical costs. They would complete their programs and bring so much funding and endowments to this university, but you don't invest in that. There are no answers.
The university has, there is no doubt that the amount of support in terms of stipends that we provide is in many, in many respects, not competitive with many other institutions that are located in the Boston area and around the world. That's a fact. It's pointed out to me all the time. But here's my issue. I don't print money. I only have so much resource. And so, yes, I wish we could pay you stipends that would be equivalent to what you might get on the other end of the red line. But we,
I'm talking about.
Okay.
That is very, very great, Barry.
Okay. In any event, I wish we could. We talk about it a lot. But in the end, there's only so much resource and the hope is, is that we're allocating that resources in ways that will make these programs successful. To answer your point, we need to look at these programs and try to understand where we have the potential, at least in my view, to be providing excellent education and great opportunity for our graduate students in their programs. And our faculty, it's incumbent on our faculty to lead that review because they know better than I, or frankly, anybody who lives, who's an administrator, where the programs are strong and where they're not. This is a really hard conversation.
I'm sorry.
So, so we're going to have it, but people have to be willing to have it.
So my issue wasn't against the faculty. I, I'm not, I'm not attacking the faculty. I want to clarify that.
Okay.
However.
I apologize. I missed.
No, it's fine. I, that's why I wanted to get the mic back. As an alumni, as a staff member, I've been here 10 years all in all between both. And I would like to say that staff run this institution.
Right.
With, well, yes, faculty teach our students and they taught me and I took forever to get through my degree because of things. We run this place and without us, the small things that have to be done for the faculty and the sta, and the other staff members and the administration will not get done. And I think it's horrible that you, that the administration doesn't respect the staff enough to at least look at themselves up in upper management and below to not protect us who have really put our necks out on the line. There are many a staff that are picking up extra job duties and it is not right. And with the VSIP and the other things going on, I know it's going to continue. That's, that's where I'm at. That's all.
I encourage you in the discussions you have with Marie to actually get the data on what's been happening at the upper administration level, to understand the kind of cuts that have actually been happening. To get to the kind of numbers that we've achieved, there has had to be actually substantial cuts at the upper administration level and they're, they have happened. Moreover, when you see on that slide that we're talking about trying to rationalize in a much more effective way, the administrative staff, I'm sorry, the A and F operations out the campus, that's something that will also have significant effects on, quote, "the upper levels of the institution." So while we are both trying to save money, we're also trying to get better. And I think it's important for people to understand, we are also trying to get better. And so I think when you have those conversations, I think the data show that the assumption that there hasn't been readjustments at the senior levels of the university is not true. Quite simply, in my own office alone, there's about $800,000 of savings in my own office alone, just on the little place. And that's not an insignificant number. But I don't take any of that lightly. The 40 to 70 people on this list, this pains me beyond belief. But if they're the lowest paid people or the highest paid people, it means people have to find other things to do. We shouldn't be so cavalier just because there are a person who's getting paid a little bit more. Nobody's getting rich on this campus. Let's be real. And so the, the idea that we can cavalierly say, well, these, these people should go, but these people should stay. The way I look at it is I'm trying to preserve every job I can preserve. I just can't figure out how to get to the result that we have to get to without finding other sources of money to get us to the balance point that we need to get to. Annette, you got a question?
Should I try and get the mic?
You could have mine.
Hi. Thank you chancellor. What you just said makes me want to ask a second question.
Go for it.
So let me ask my second question first, which is, could your administration provide to us those details of what has happened at the staffing levels for the upper administration and below?
Sure.
In addition to cuts to consultants and hiring of new consultants?
Sure.
We would appreciate the numbers. And let me just say in defense, as one of the people who has been a proponent of looking at the upper level administration and cuts there, those suggestions aren't made cavalierly either. We recognize that people who work on this campus have been very committed to this campus. It has been based on the, on the numbers-based analysis comparing this campus to other campuses and looking at where we are out of whack and where we think savings could be made. So it's not a cavalier suggestion at all from our part about that. Here's my question though. You raised earlier the fact that you can't print money and we hear repeatedly, particularly from the board of trustees, that we have a new reality that we have to live within and that reality is a lowered budget. I've been talking to a number of representatives and senators since a group of us issued our report on crumbling public foundations. And one of the things that I heard from them is that there have been meetings between legislators who are supportive of this campus and who felt that it was possible to add more money into a supplemental budget this year for this campus in order to keep the ELC open and in order potentially to offset some of our debt and interest payments to minimize the amount of cuts that were necessary. I've also heard that in at least one of those meetings with the university, that the university said, no, thank you to that money. My question to you is, are you aware of those meetings? Were you involved in those meetings? And how, how can we, it's really hard to stand here and anticipate the hurt that's being done to employees here with those cuts, the hurt that's already been done to our eight sisters who worked out at the early learning center and are losing their jobs, and the hurt that's going to be done to our students through the lack of services and support that our staff and our faculty provide. That is very real when we're also hearing that upper level administrators, not necessarily from this campus, but from UMass, have walked away from significant amounts of money being offered by the legislature to us. That's heartbreaking.
So, no, I've not been a party to a single conversation. I don't know of the conversations that you're describing. I believe they've happened, but I don't, this is the first I've heard of it. I am, I, I can conceive of folks who think that they could provide the funds on some basis in the short term or maybe long-term on the early learning center. That seems credible to me. What seems less likely to me in reality is the depth of our problem on the capital side is so significant that it seems unlikely to me that side is so significant that it seems unlikely to me that the legislature, without us all hearing about it, is gonna be willing to step up to those kinds of numbers. Maybe it's true. I just haven't heard it. And so, do we have conversations? Have I had conversations down in the other part of the city about how it's important for the state to support the capital improvements of this university and frankly, all the universities in the system? The answer is yes. Have I been partying conversations where it's been pointed out that the state of Massachusetts doesn't support necessarily the capital side of the university systems the way other states do? I've heard that downtown. But the reality that we're in right now is, I believe what you're saying, I just haven't seen those kinds of dollars made available. Just to put this in perspective, the state of Massachusetts has given to this campus over the last five to seven years on these projects that we've just done $300 million. I don't think that includes the $78 million for the substructure. That is more than any other university in the university system received by a factor of two, and in some cases, a factor of four, and the medical school has received zero. So in terms of our getting our proper share of what the state has allocated, I think it's fair to say, it's a fact, that we have gotten a disproportionate share of the resources they've made available. Now whether the total amount they're making available is appropriate, given the level of our problem, it's not. Given the level of the problem at Dartmouth, it's not. I don't know if you've been there, but it's not. But I haven't heard the conversations you're talking about, but making the case for us to get more money for the capital projects that we need is a case that we try to make all the time. The point that I have made a number of times, and I believe this, is that to the extent we show more discipline in our operating budgets... You were at these trustee meetings. The level of confidence in this campus is not at the highest right now, at various levels of the UMass system. When we show discipline, as painful as it is, and believe me, I get it, that is gonna send a message that this campus is something, that they should be thinking about it in a different way. That narrative and that fact hopefully will change the way they decide to fund. Let's be clear. Kathleen said the substructure project has been approved by the Board of Trustees. They approved $155 million. That $155 million is probably enough, probably, not certainly, probably enough, maybe enough, to take down the substructure and demolish the Science Building. But it's probably more expensive than that. And that doesn't replace everybody who's in the Science Building. This campus cannot afford that project. It cannot be built off the back of this campus. Can't happen. I just can't make the, we cannot make the numbers work. So all of the story that we've said, that there's a path forward, it's a path forward ex the substructure. There's really only two ways that I know of that is a path towards getting the substructure done and allowing the university not to have to bear the burden, which you just can't do. The numbers just don't add up. And the paths are, one, we get more money from the state, or two, Bayside. Bayside is a very, very valuable piece of property, and it has two roles, I think, for this university going forward. The first role is, it's an important place where hopefully there will be important partnerships formed that will allow us to have more academic space out on the Bayside property. But in addition, this university needs to be paid appropriately for that site, and an economic deal must be struck, which provides the university on a either continuing basis or on a flat-out cash basis, straight up, or maybe a combination, of resources that we can use to be able to find the money to do the substructure project. Now, it was unfortunate, some of you are thinking like this, thinking about this. It is unfortunate, we actually have to use the money on that. It would be much better for us if the state gave us the money and we could use that money for other projects that we would like to do. But as I stand here today, I can't promise you that, and I don't know of anybody who thinks that that's the case. That doesn't mean I can't continue to advocate for it, and I know that there are people downtown who believe it. So when I cavalierly said I can't print money, what I can't do, I can try to convince folks that they ought to be supporting, just like you incredibly well articulated to the Board of Trustees and frankly, the report that you wrote. Points out the issues. We may not agree on every issue, but it points out that the facts very accurately. We need to continue to do that as an organization, as individuals. We need to continue to make our case. I do that. But to this point, you heard the reaction you received, I've heard reactions that I've received, I recognize all of the economic challenges that the state has. I have to be realistic. I'm hopeful. But right now, the goal, at least from my point of view, is to get us stabilized on the operating side, make sure we can pay for the projects we've done, and then figure out Bayside and continue to make our case, but not get too far down the road on the substructure project. Because what we can't do, which is what we have done sometimes in the past, is start, but not have enough money. You can't start until you know the path to being able to pay for it. So that's where we are. On your point about the layoffs, it troubles me beyond belief. I am struggling to understand how we find our way through without this pathway. But to this point, unfortunately, we are in the spot that we're in. Yeah. Excuse me?
Data?
Data?
I'm gonna ask about data on the administrative cuts.
Sure, we will get you the data on the administrative cuts. We will, Marie?
Yeah.
Yes. Marie said, okay, Marie will get it. All right. If you don't get it, email me.
We'll get it. We talked about it yesterday. So, you know, anything you want is coming out.
Sorry.
Hold on.
We talked a little bit about this yesterday. Oh, the mic, sorry. We talked a little bit, I'm usually so loud. We talked a little bit about this yesterday with, actually, I think with Kelsey and with Annete and with others. So, you know, we're happy to provide the information, and we're gonna be doing this all in a very consultative way. It's not gonna make it pleasant. It's not gonna be pleasant. But we have no interest in hiding the ball. We're only gonna be able to do this in a respectful way if we're at least transparent about the data that's causing us to make the decisions we make. So we'll definitely be sharing and be in touch, as we discussed yesterday.
And I'm not, if you want to read sort of an independent view, not from us, of the university's economics that fairly presents where we sit, read what Annete prepared.
You have a question right here?
Okay, where are we?
Right here, I think. So, I'm Joe Ramsey. I teach in English and American Studies. I'm also on the Faculty Staff Union's Executive Committee. And I want to make two quick points, or two quick questions, I suppose. One is, to complicate a bit, the assertion that the narrative that we've had students unable to progress as a result of faculty cuts is false. I know of students whom I could name right now, I won't do it in public, but who have not been able to come back to UMass Boston as a result of cuts to classes. Now, it wasn't because necessarily there weren't any classes offered, it was rather because there were not classes that fit their very busy working and commuter schedules. And I think that it's, I mean, I guess my question here would be, what is the administration doing to factor in the specific needs of our student body into questions about, you know, course cancellations or not? Was that actively factored in to the last round? I'm glad, as a faculty member and as a union rep, to hear that there are not more faculty and class cuts coming at the moment, but I would like to hear an answer to that, although that's kind of like the secondary point I wanted to make right now. Because I know of students who have said they couldn't get a schedule together that wasn't five-day-a-week or four-day-a-week, and they're commuting over an hour to campus, right? So I think that's a very specific need that our students have that needs to be factored in. It's not simply are there courses available, but courses that fit their working schedules, their family demands, and their commutes. Basically, just following up on Annete's question and on the interim chancellor's response to it, one of the points in the crumbling foundations, crumbling public foundations report, one of the major areas of research is on the issue of upper administration salaries and what's called institutional support, right? And one of the claims of that report is that UMass Boston continues to be an outlier within the system as a whole when it comes to that category of expense. So my question right now is, it sounds as if you feel that this study is sound in its statistics. Do you endorse the claim that in fact, UMass Boston, at the level of upper administration institutional support, is an outlier within our system? And if so, I really would like to see those numbers about what we're going to do about that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marie Bowen. I don't think we've met. I'm the Vice Chancellor of HR. We did look at the report. I think that one of the places where we do differ, actually, is around this issue. In fact, we've had some conversations. You know, I know there was a section of the report about titles and positions, and I think we do agree that we have more titles here that include the word chancellor in it. That's true. I don't think we agree with the interpretation of the institutional support, and I think that we need to better understand kind of the data that's feeding into those numbers from the other campuses before we make sweeping generalizations about how we compare. So I think we need to work on that a little bit.
Oh, you have yours.
Joe, I would say on that one point of the titles in the report, I've talked to the faculty union about that in a Labor Management meeting in some detail. In that report, for instance, it says that there are, I forget how many, but a very, very large number of people with the word provost in their titles. And it is very true that there are people with that word in their title. They're not sitting in my office, in the provost's office, helping me. I can tell you that, because I have a very diminished office, as Barry does. If we at this campus choose to call our CIO a vice provost, or our Director of Institutional Research a vice provost, then we may have more people with provost in their title than a campus that calls them a director, or a CIO, or a vice chancellor, or whatever. I mean, it's all a question of what you call them, but I don't think anyone would really assert that we shouldn't have those functions on campus, that we shouldn't have someone in charge of IT, or someone in charge of institutional research. Well, if, I mean, we could change their title, and that would get rid of the word provost from several of their portfolios, but it wouldn't get rid of the function.
So while we were talking, late-breaking news, we called the President's office to find out if they actually turned down any money. Because that would be unfortunate. And at least based on what I'm reading, based on the conversation that was had downtown, at least as far as the person we spoke to knows, we have not, they did not turn down any money that's been offered to them. So we will continue to follow up on this. I met myself, I had dinner with the President of the Senate, and I had a very fun meeting with the Speaker of the House, talked about UMass Boston at length. Neither one of them offered me any money, but we did talk very extensively about the university. But we'll follow up. We'll follow up. But as far as we know, I don't know. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Trent Buskirk, Center for Survey Research. I wanted to say that I appreciated the level of detail and the amount of effort that has been undertaken to look under every nook and cranny of this university to save money. I think it's a really, really difficult time, and it's a lot of effort that you undertook, and I appreciate the explanation. Given that, it takes us to the $5 million deficit level, and I think by any standards, a $5 million deficit isn't a balanced budget. And so I'm wondering what you're thinking about for the next round, because obviously, it's been extensive to get us to this point. But what does it look like to get to the next point of something closer to less than $5 million deficit?
I think it's a twofold approach. I mean, one is, some of the savings we're realizing this year with staffing, there's continued and larger savings in the subsequent year, because you don't have the terminal payments that you have to pay out in the first year. So there's some additional savings we're gonna pay there. Additionally, the next steps to help us get, on the slide for the next steps for the $5 million deficit are better, you know, there's, when we look at the centers and institutes, when we talk about program review and temporary employees and reorganizing A&amp;F and marketing, those things, there's not numbers tied attached to it yet, and what we're talking about with the numbers we've talked this afternoon. So that would be additional savings. So I think the path is there to get us below, you know, get us below zero, get us back on the positive side, as well as generating revenue. If we increase our enrollment for the spring semester, we improve our performance for how many students enroll here in the summer, we look at some ways we can generate revenue, that just, that also just decreases that gap, you know, helps to make it better without having to do any reductions. So I mean, there's things we can do to help, to help look on the revenue side, to help further get us back into a positive operating margin.
Interim Chancellor, hi. Sorry, I was next with the mic.
I apologize.
It's okay, don't worry. Matt Power-Cook, daughter was at the Early Learning Center. We just are blessed enough that we found a place for her. Excuse me. So, following up some of the questions that had been had about the Early Learning Center, I just wanted to ask you, because I think these town forums are very essential to our community and being able to come together and put our minds together, our hearts together, to figure out how we can support this institution, which I think everyone sitting in seats around is here for a reason and a purpose. Will you extend the deadline to close the Early Learning Center so that we can work with you and the College of Education and Human Development, work-study, jump-start the faculty in the Psychology Department undergrad, grad, and PhD programs to figure out what our options are? And I can just let you know, sir, that we do have a coalition of people on Capitol Hill, Senator Linda Dorcina-Forey, State Rep Dan Hunt, State Rep Nick Collins, Jeffrey Sanchez, Head of Ways and Means, Sal DiDomenico, the Vice Chair with the Ways and Means. We have Tito Jackson, Ayana Presley, and Frank Baker, whose niece is still at the Early Learning Center and does not have a place for her daughter to go. Will you work with us, sir?
We are working quite diligently, in fact, spending an enormous amount of time in conversations with an organization in the community that is a superb provider of early learning center services. We are quite optimistic, quite optimistic, that that organization is eager to partner with our Education Department in the long term, but in the short term, run this operation for the long term, for your daughter and the hundreds of daughters that come after your daughter, who will be able to go to this place, and maintain an operation or an Early Learning Center in this neighborhood that will work for employees, students here, staff, faculty, and community members. I'm told that this organization is at least as good as the one that we currently operate. They're highly respected, and they do it on a cost basis that is substantially lower than the cost basis that we find ourselves running the Early Learning Center on, which I know you don't agree, but costs the university close, at least $1,500, $550,000 a year, but the number is more like $700,000 a year. And so, I think if you are cooperative with those folks and make them feel welcome, because this community group wants to feel welcome, you will have a solution, I'm highly confident. I can't guarantee it, but I'm highly confident, and there will be a success... I can't guarantee it, but I'm highly confident, and there will be a successful solution to this issue for the long term on a sustainable basis that makes sense for both the university and for that organization, and by the way, for the community.
We would love to be invited to those conversations, sir, but so far, we have not been invited to those conversations, and we would love to discuss it with you further.
And when I'm highly confident that you're willing to do that on a way that won't scuttle those conversations, I'm eager to have you in the room. Next question. Yes.
Shalia, the Classified Staff Union. I have one question. What is the academic heart of UMB going to do when the muscles are no longer helping it run? What are you going to do when we're not there to make you a copy, when we're not there to make you a travel arrangement? How can this heart run without its muscles?
You've got the microphone, yeah?
I had a comment and then a question. First comment is, since the non-unit people on campus get raises that can be different than the bargaining unit people, I would suggest that whatever the bargaining unit people get, maybe the non-unit people should get the same. But my question is, as far as the budget and the things that were explained, it sounds like there were things that were found or discovered or problems in the past. I would like to know if you could elaborate a little more about what some of those issues were. And then my other concern is going forward, since we've had a revolving door in our administration for some time, and you're leaving in June, and we have interim appointments, if we get on a stable budget, how do we know that would continue?
Yeah, I'll speak to that. So, so I'm not interim, so I will be here for the long term. The university has used a forecasting model that helps establish its budget. There is a role for forecasting model in our financial operations, just not to build the budget. So I think part of how we get ourselves out of this is the staff right now, the financial staff, both in the administrative side as well as in the provost area, has worked on building a budget from the ground up, so that we can really take a look at everything that goes into the budget. It's not based on assumptions and things that, you know, forecasts. It's based on real numbers, real plans that everybody submitted, so that that way, then you'll have your budget and you'll be confident that you can take your budget and deploy it. You won't have to have vacancy review committee, you won't have to have, you know, constantly have your budget changing around, this is what it is. So we're also working actively with UMass to get a system to do that. Right now, this is all manual, for an organization the size, that's really unacceptable, and we're going to work to put a system in so that we can have, provide departments' tools so they can help look at their budgets and build their budget, and have it be a little bit more effective. So some of the things we found are really a direct result of using this model to develop the budget. You know, we, our employee base changed over time as we, as we cut back on the hiring. So we needed to make assumptions with some of the accounting, accounting type entries that also go into our books around accruals and how much we record for benefits people have earned over time and sick and vacation, some of our exposure around workers' compensation, some of those things have provided, there are some things that we've discovered that originally, they just change over time, and you just need to have a better way to keep track of where they currently stand. But I think there'll be more information coming out of it. Part of it really is actually the process the university used in the past about how they developed their budget. They were moving, numbers move constantly, and I think anybody who's been here for a while probably has experienced that a little bit. So we're really looking to, as I said, build the budget from the ground up, so that if you have a department and you have 10 people, and here's the salary of those people, that's the number. Number doesn't need to change. If you've got plans in your department that you're going to hold these number of events, or you're going to have this amount of work going on, you have that funding, and it's, we've put the money behind that, so you can feel confident that you go ahead and do that.
And on the issue of the future, one of the things that I think that we can take comfort in is that with the changes in the quote, "upper administration" that have occurred over the last number of months, at least from my perspective, there are a group of people who both have the heart and the head that you can rely on. They have discipline in terms of the financial, they understand the academic side, and they understand the mission of the university. My hope is that I can change them to their desks, and so that when I do leave, they stay and help the next leader. Because it's one thing to be the leader, but you really need talented people to do some of these hard jobs with. This group that has taken on these roles is really talented, and that stability will help the new leader. I recognize that this is another set of change for the university. Being an interim chancellor, the part about being interim, that is my last title. I wish I were at a different stage in my career, but you have to sort of recognize reality. The university deserves and needs a person who can help all, work with all of you to understand what the strategic mission of this university ought to be for the next 15 years. I have views, but I'm not going to be here to implement that vision. And the person who helps you devise that vision needs to be the person who will be here to lead that effort. And since I know I'm not going to be here to do that, that, and given that, as difficult as this is, and it is really difficult, to get to the kind of stability that we think we have plotted out, I'm very, I'm very optimistic that we're going to find terrific people who are interested in coming to lead this unbelievably terrific institution. And that process, which I think is going to begin tomorrow, I think they're going to announce a search committee and they're going to get at it, clearly will engage all of you. And you, it's important that despite all of the difficult morale on the campus, and all the sometimes downer attitude that we all feel because of what we're going through, that we make sure whoever comes and visits this campus to understand the opportunity to lead it understands what it's really about, and why this is a place that someone should come and be enthusiastic to lead. So that's our job, too. And so I am, I've spoken to a lot of talented folks in the educational world who are very connected, and I'm hopeful that we're going to find somebody really great. Yeah, okay.
Hey.
Yeah, please. Yeah.
Listen, I'm a full-time student and a full-time parent. It's on, I think.
It is now.
Oh, I got to put it real close. Okay, listen, I work full-time and I come here full-time, right? And you guys are sitting here telling me how you need to increase revenue to get your students in here, or like whatever, to fix your balance, right? I can't be here five days a week, and I am this week, and there's nobody at home watching my son. I have my mother coming up from New Bedford to watch my son, because I only have classes available to me on Tuesday, Thursday, and to make it worse, it's like, I'm here from 9:00 AM till 12:00 for two classes, and then I come, I stay here until 4:00 for my next two classes, and then I have one class on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So I hear you saying that we're not going to be affected, but I can't continue on this path, and I don't hear you guys talking about how you're going to make this work for the students, because I'm not alone. There's a lot of us who can't come here five days a week, and like, we have to.
Okay, so the issue, the issue you're raising is not an issue actually tied to the financial problem that we have. The issue you're raising is an issue we had when we were financially healthy and we didn't have some of the issues that we have today. Same issue. The challenge for the university is actually to address your issue, and to figure out how we organize ourselves to be able to meet your needs. That's an issue which is separate and apart, in my view.
Is it?
Yeah, it is. It is separate and apart. It's not caused by the financial problem we have. It existed before.
And you're exasperating me by making these cuts. Like, that's what it's saying.
We may be making, I don't, at least I'm told we aren't making it much worse, but let me ask you a question. If you had online education for some of your classes, and you could take it from New Bedford at home, would you do it?
The online classes cost a lot more money and financially it doesn't cover.
Okay, so let's say we solve the problem. Let's say, let's say we figure out how to solve the problem. Would you do it?
If financially covered, would I do it?
Yeah.
Sure, but it doesn't.
Okay, but let's say it did, and so let's suppose we encourage the faculty to create more online courses so that you could actually take those classes from home, and we figured out a way to support it. Those are the kinds of conversations that need to happen going forward.
But it can't happen if you're making cuts.
This is a, the problem you identify is a problem that is a long-term problem that we need to fix. It existed before, it may, in your view, it may be getting worse now. It's, if it's worse, it's marginally worse. This is an issue which we as an institution need to face up to more generally, and it's a conversation that we all need to have. So I get your point. It's important for everybody in this room to hear it. And it isn't just about online education, but we need to figure this out. So, thank you. I'm not blowing you off, believe me. I get it that you think it's making it worse.
They're like, you're not getting that they are related, they're directly related. You letting go of staff affects our teachers, how they are able to do their job, and that affects how I'm able to learn. I'm paying a lot of money to come here and learn, and you're sitting there threatening these people's jobs. And you're threatening their jobs, you're threatening the mental health of your staff that come in to teach me, and they're depressed and they're stressed out because their coworkers are losing their jobs. And I'm not trying to be upset with you, but you're making, you're taking this too lightly. This is serious. You're trying to tell me it's not related, it's directly related. They're the same thing. If you can't figure that out, you're not going to be able to get this budget together. I got to go to class, and we really don't want to get it together, man.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi. I've been asked to notify people that Phenom debriefing is in room 3545 down the hall after this is over. I had a couple of things. Maybe I've been watching the Vietnam series a little bit too much, but you keep telling me we're at the light at the end of the tunnel, and I'm looking at the deficits that I see ahead of us, with many of them related to construction. And I appreciate your plans, but I'm not so sure. And I hope that you can reassure us that the types of cuts that you're making now, this is it, and it's not going to keep continuing, that every year, we're going to have to be going through these things. It's really difficult. That said, at a recent Board of Trustees meeting, the chair of the Board of Trustees went into a rant about how UMass Boston has a corrupt, a culture, a corrupted culture. And I'm listening to you, and you're telling us how we want to go to the Board of Trustees, we hope to get support from them. We know, those of us who've been here for a number of years, we know how the state has cut back on assistance to us. We know that that's the root of our problems, that and the bad construction here. We know what the solution therefore is. So I'm thinking about, what is a corrupted culture here? I don't understand what this person is talking about, and how are you going to address that for us so that we can correct this dreadful misconception and get us what we need here on this campus? Thank you.
I understand completely the reaction to those words, and I was taken aback myself. I think, because I know the chair really well, and know that he is among the greatest supporters actually of this institution, I know it didn't sound like it, but I'm telling you, he really is. I think what he was reacting to, I know what he was reacting to, is there was a couple of questions before about what happened in the past. It's not corrupt. He got carried away. What he was talking about, I think, is a finding that is, I think, accurate, that it's fair to say that the budgeting process and the way finance was managed here was not managed in accordance with best practices that colleges and universities use generally. I don't think that comes as a surprise to many of the people in this room. And as a business guy, when he heard about some of the practices that were being put into effect and the way the numbers were moving around, reacting to the fact that over the year we just finished, the Board of Trustees were told that the university was going to have a 2% surplus. And then in January, they were told it was a, that the deficit was there but not very big, and then in March, it became $15 million, and the numbers kept moving all around, and when they tried to figure out where the justification for all those numbers came from, it was impossible to figure out exactly where all of these assumptions were being made. If you're a businessperson and you see that kind of activity, it's not corruption, but it isn't best practices in the way that people try to do their finances and keep their books. That's what he was reacting to. Did he overstep his words? I haven't spoken to him about that, but I suspect he did, and he would say that, but he wasn't talking about corrupt and corruption. He was talking about a concern about the way the finances of the institution were being managed. You and I have had these conversations, and so what we are endeavoring to do, someone, is to actually rationalize those, that analysis and that budgeting, and to peel away the assumptions that were being made in the past and attach to those budgets, reasonable assumptions that match reality, not that match what we hope will happen. Not build budgets assuming that there'll be rapid, rapid growths in enrollment that were just not conceivable, where you had finance people creating enrollment projections and never talking to the enrollment people. That's not corrupt, but it's not best practice. And so when you're a Board of Trustees and you see budgets being presented to you on that basis, and the numbers are moving, 2% positive, 3% negative, 15% negative, 30% negative, and you're the steward, and you have fiduciary responsibility, you get nervous. That's what he was reacting to. The kind of work that we're doing now, that these folks are leading and that I'm part of, has peeled away a lot of the mystery, and now we are actually dealing with actual numbers from last year. We understand what we're doing this year, we're understanding what it's going to mean for next year, and we're projecting out past just this year into two and three and four years ahead to try to understand that we don't have to do it again. Or if we do have to look two years ahead, not just one year ahead, what does that really mean? So I'm, we're trying to bring prudent financial management. My only caveat is what I said earlier. The only path that I don't understand through is the substructure problem. That's the only path I don't understand. Everything else, there's a, there is a pathway, and if we get ourselves stable, I'm pretty confident if we make good decisions. See, every time someone thinks about doing something new, in an environment where tuition is not going to go up much, and the state appropriation probably isn't going to go up much, and unless philanthropy increases or some other source of revenue is going to increase, one has to ask the question, if I want to do something new, how do I pay for it? Otherwise, we're not being responsible. And we have to be pretty sure if we're going to do something new, that we're going to have the revenue to support it. That's not the way we've thought in the past. And so that's the kind of planning that we're doing. So I am working with the board. I was on the phone with that fellow yesterday, and I explained to him where I think we are, and the level of confidence in the place is changing. Yeah?
Hi, I just want to shift the focus towards the students, being the president for the Graduate Students Association. Firstly, I want to ask, if I go onto the website, it says our university is Boston's Public Research University, but then I come here and I hear about things like masters and PhD student or programs are not living up to the standards. I just want to ask, I mean, there is, there's no stipend for the PhD students for the fourth year. I get emails as Graduate Students Association president bias from students who are saying that their assistantships are being cut, even if they're quarter assistantships. The first meeting that I had with you, sir, was, you told me you don't like the idea of students not paying for their degrees, even if it was a quarter assistantship that just waives quarter of your fees to do research, which our university's main mission is. waives quarter of your fees to do research, which our university's main mission is. And there's an increase in the fees for the students. I want to know how, what incentive you're giving new students to come and apply to this university and how you expect the enrollment to go up if this is what's happening? Like what, as a graduate student, if I want to come to the university, what incentive do I have if I'm not getting paid stipend for my research that I'm conducting, if I'm not getting that assistantship? And especially as a, as an international student? So I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
So I'm going to give you a real honest answer. I haven't studied it yet and I don't know the answer to your question. I understand the problem, but in the time that I've been here since July, it's not an issue which I've yet tried to figure out.
But aren't students the top priority of the university? Isn't something that you should, you should be getting around this?
Yes, and if the issue you just raised was being raised by faculty who visit my office every day suggesting to me that this is an incredible impediment to them delivering the programs they want to deliver, maybe I would have focused on it more quickly. But I'm not here, I understand the problem you're raising, but in all the issues that have landed on my doorstep in these just few months, this is not the, an issue which has reached the top of people's concerns. But now that I hear it, and I, and I know I heard it before, we will, I, come see me, let's talk about this. I need to get educated. I can't promise you anything that I don't, I don't know about. I haven't studied it, so come see me, let's talk about the problem and we'll work on it. More than that, I can't promise you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, Tom. Oh, hold on, hold on. We'll be right back to you. Yeah.
Chancellor Mills, my name is Michael Larkin, I am the Aquatics Program Manager.
Oh. Oh, okay. All right.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Right? So it's not funny for me.
No, I know, I know, I know.
See the pool up there, we're being axed. So I take this time, first time meeting you, I like to tell you a little bit about what we do. We've been doing yeoman's work. I've been here since '05, and I hear you talk about being very civil with our budgets. I first came here, we had a $10,000 blanket order to, for test kits, I immediately cut that, right? We had a $10,000 blanket order to a pool company, I immediately cut that. That was in '05, right? So we have been, what, 10, 12 years without those, right? Saved a lot of money. And we've, I don't know if you've been to the pool.
I have.
But it's, we have challenges.
Yeah.
But if you just look down at the water, it is immaculate, right? That's where the people swim. So a few fold, right? One, we are a classroom, right? We have scuba class there, the students have a wonderful time. I think Mr. Lyman is beginning to build up his coursework and we're hoping, we'll see, to have more of those courses. This place is kind of dead in the summer, but for aquatics, we host a plethora of youth groups. We continue to bring in partners throughout the communities. We have three swim teams, metropolitan Boston area. We got, all of these are paid groups. We have swim camps. So it is, it is, the, the challenge for me, being that seemingly we might add a miniscule amount to the budget, but we are adding, I think. So for us to be taken off the plan to seem like, because up until now, I have been told new pool, new pool, new pool, but hate to see the screen, right?
Okay, so, so, so let me, in the interest of time, we have a certain amount of debt capacity based on money that we borrowed in the past. Some of that has been eaten up by other projects and have crowded out projects that we thought we were going to do. That doesn't mean we'll never do them. It may mean we need to find another source of payment. Because as I talk about the substructure project, that's going to gen, and Bayside, all that's going to generate funds. How those funds get spent, it's quite conceivable that there could be enough funds when that all shakes out to do the pool. I don't know exactly what a pool costs to build, but.
I don't know.
How much?
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10 million dollars? Eight to 10 million dollars to get someone to name a pool in philanthropy, rather than thinking that we have to build it off the back of tuition or off the back of state funding? That should be doable in the city of Boston. We should be able to find someone who'll give us eight to 10 million dollars and build the pool. Need to start thinking that way. So the fact that we took it off the list was only because we ran out of debt capacity with the money we've currently borrowed, doesn't mean we're never going to do it. What we need to do is create a focus on how we find someone who'll either fund it or figure out another way to pay for it. Okay? All right. One more question. Yes, you're on.
I want to get back to a couple of issues of revenue. I mean, the whole, I don't know, I don't have, I just don't have a lot of sympathy with the profits of discipline. I sort of feel like we've been told ever since Jim Pizer came here, I don't know when it was, like two years ago, or two years ago, you know, that there really wasn't enough to go around and we needed to trim our sails. And I feel like that's been a steadily increasing message from the Board of Trustees. But the first thing I want to ask about, I want to ask about two issues of revenue. One is Bayside, which I'm glad you brought up. Because one of the things we've heard recently is, is, you know, we've been following the request for proposals on Bayside, we've been trying to find out what we can. And one of the things we're hearing is that it's not unlikely that whatever happens there can happen within two to three years, number one. And number two, that it could bring up to 30 million a year to the, to the university.
A year?
Yes. That's what we're hearing. I don't, if that's totally off or crazy, I would like to know that because that's what we're hearing. Because if, if something like that is feasible, it, it really changes the picture we're looking at. It, it, it changes it to a, a different kind of short-term emergency. So that's, that's one question. I mean, from your response, it sounds like you haven't heard that. We'll look further into it, but it'd be great if you could too. The other thing I want to ask about revenue, which hasn't been mentioned yet, is, and is also on a two to three-year timeline, is the Fair Share Amendment. And I don't think this is, you know, I don't think this is pie in the sky, I don't think it's just wishing for more state funding. I think it's a real possibility. And its opponents think it's a real enough possibility so that some of the associates of some of our trustees have filed suit to prevent it. These are the folks from the High Tech Council have filed suit to prevent it. And Marty Mian sits on the board of the High Tech Council.
Apparently so do I, full disclosure. I've never been.
Well, I don't know if you do or not, we've heard that.
I've been told that I do, but I don't, I've never been there.
We've heard that the campuses are members of the High Tech, Chancellors are members of the High Tech Council, but the President serves on the board.
I see.
It seems to me that the President and the trustees have a role to play right now at this very moment in resigning from that council, doing whatever they can to expose that lawsuit for what it is. And if they don't do that, they are not acting as the fiduciary representatives of, of UMass. And, and I guess my question is, can't you, with the influence you have, prevail upon Marty and others to do something about this? This is crucial to this campus and to public higher ed and public education and transportation in general. It's a real thing that we could be doing now.
On your two questions. On the first, I, I've not heard about this $30 million a year revenue source. It strikes me as incredibly high, given the potential development of that property, that $30 million would come to us a year. That's a remarkable return on the value of that property today. I'm not saying it's not true, but.
Do you have something you're guessing at?
No, I don't actually. I don't.
What kind of development are we talking about?
Well, people are proposing everything, well, mixed use, mixed use means retail, retail, office, apartments, and I'm hoping, and, and university purposes, all right? And so it just strikes me as high. I'm hoping that the number is high enough that it will support borrowing the money necessary to do the substructure if it doesn't come from someone else, somewhere else. And so if you say the substructure, let's say we had to borrow, I'm making this up, $200 million in addition to what the state's given us, that's probably 10, 12 million dollars a year of debt service, right? So if it's, if it could support that, that would be huge, right? Wouldn't help on our operating budget, but it would be huge and would forestall some of our other issues. That's, now, that 10 to 12 strikes me as high too, but it's possible. Depends on what the deal is and what gets built there. On the Fair Share Amendment, look, I know, Marty knows, the trustees know that this university is completely in favor of the Fair Share Amendment, and they have heard over and over again from all of you and from me that the university wants us to take action to stop those folks from doing it. I don't have that much influence. I'm, I have told them, I've encouraged them, but, so I think this is a grassroots organization effort by you folks to get in people's viewpoints and faces, and, and even more than you have, let them know.
What's going on there, what's going on there?
I think there's a skepticism, to be honest, that the money will come to the university. That they think that the K through 12 folks who deserve to be supported and the transportation folks, because I think it's both for K through 12 and transportation, that that's where the money will go, so that they don't think it's as big an imperative for the university as it might be. And that's my impression as to why they're not banging down the door. They're very skeptical that those, that if it happens, that the money will come this way. I don't know. I'm, I don't know. So I will talk to you privately, it's, it's well after four o'clock, you guys, somebody's offering you coffee and doughnuts and stuff. I encourage you to all go and thank you. December, we're back in December.